Let's go ahead and call the bid into order and we'll start with our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Before we pray, I'd just like to remind everybody that today marks the anniversary of the September 11 attacks that happened almost actually exactly 16 years ago. So in memorance of the first responders and the families that lost many of their loved ones, I'd like to say a quick prayer. Let's bar heads please. Heavenly Father, may all of us remember with love and compassion this day. May we grieve those who still mourn. May we stand with strangers who became neighbors that day and remember their generosity and hospitality. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to item three and we have a presentation by our city manager.
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to ask James Cardoza to step up and help me with the presentation. But you know, not only are we a strong nation, like today is a great reminder of that being September 11th, but also we are a great state, the great state of Texas. When things happen through our, out our state, you know, we come together as a family. We unite. And that's actually what happened about two weeks ago. So two weeks ago, City of Mission got together with a lot of community members. This was a community-driven relief that we did for Hurricane Harvey. And so we got together with a lot of organizations, a lot of volunteers, a lot of people that just wanted to really come out and help. And we're very grateful and blessed that we have community members that are always wanting to reach out and help others. A lot of churches that also came together to assist. So we do have a report where we had approximately, were actually seven tractor-trailers that we sent out to the coastal bend area of Corpus, all the way to Baytown, the Houston area. And that is almost a little bit over 200,000 pounds of just supplies from water to food to some of it clothing as well. And so we're very happy that we got together as a, as a community and was able to assist in this community-driven relief. So James, you can give us a quick presentation and the people who are here to receive some recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Garza, Mayor, City Council. It is humbling and honoring to stand here and speak about the community who's come together. It was at eight o'clock in the morning when we received the phone call from our city manager saying, hey, we have to do something for our state of Texas, right? What can we do? So we got together and a meeting from three, four people grew to quickly to 10, 15, 20 minutes. We were in the conference room and the plan started to come together, right? We started making some phone calls with our local union fire departments. They had a plan. So what we wanted to do today is recognize those companies, those private businesses and organizations who made this happen for us. And without them, this could not have been such a successful endeavor. As our city manager said, seven tractor-trailer loads, 200,000 pounds of food, water, clothing, baby items, cleaning supplies, everything that was needed. We coordinated through the state, civic organizations, and some vocational organizations that helped out in here. But we want to recognize there's so many who donated. So I'm going to ask Cecilia if she could come here. We have some token of appreciation on behalf of the City of Mission. The first one is Mr. Bob Dyer, Mr. Grohl Select. Bob Dyer and out of Grohl Select, Mr. Rolie Barra, the forklift operator, they were gracious enough to lend us their dock. Started with a phone call from our assistant. And after that, it ended up being, sir, we need one more favor, one more favor, one more favor. And then I think we took over his warehouse. So he kind of just gave us the keys and says, here, do whatever you want. Take my driver, take our stuff. And so Mr. Dyer, out of Grohl Select, City of Mission, we thank you for supporting us in this endeavor and the state of Texas. Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
It came a time when we first started getting our equipment and everything together that it became a little overwhelming because it quickly, the community wanted to give so quick. And we just couldn't find a place to put everything so quickly. So there was a phone call put in and Mr. Rigo Cerda out of Palmhurst, out of SARS Trucking, S-A-R-S, LTD, said, James, what do you need? Rigo and I used to work together at McDonald's back in high school, you know, so we kind of knew each other. So he started out with one tractor-trailer and then two. And then he just kind of said, what do you need, right? What do you need? Basically, besides letting me drive a tractor-trailer, right? Says, there's my drivers, there's my trucks, there's the cab. And his company ended up taking the first two to Baytown and one to Houston. Those were the ones who assisted us, you know, because there was so much, as we mentioned, seven tractor-trailers, sir. Again, SARS Trucking, the City of Mission, thanks you, sir. We've seen it such in the news. Our partners here from HEB, they're here present as well. We had two sites. We had the northbound site and we had the south here by the Parks and Rec. Of course, overwhelming, not, it was like, we have enough pallets. We don't have enough pallets. We didn't have enough boxes. We didn't have enough surrender app and tape. So our guys ran every day, literally, two, three times a day to the three HEBs. The one on the 495 and Conway, the one downtown, and the one on Sherry. And I think they took some pallets. They shouldn't have taken, right? But we're going to put them back. We're going to put them back. But again, we want to thank you, HEB. We've seen it in the news. You guys have been great. You have your disaster trailers out there. But I walked in there like a minute. I introduced myself. I kind of pushed my car, says, I need your help. Two seconds later, they said, pull your truck around. What do you need? Well, you just come back as many times as you want. Any other locations, if not, we'll call the store. So, yes, please. Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you. Another local supermarket that we couldn't have done it with, we started pretty much using our own resources, is our own voice supermarket here at the corner of Frontage and Expressway. I think we took more than we should have. All right. So Ramiro, thank you very much, sir. The north end of town, right, with 2718 North Conway, it started out with our union, our firefighters, right? We went together. We went to business owners. Everybody wanted to help. And that's great. One who says is, you can take over whatever you want and was collecting and even put in from his own pocket is Movie Night, right? Homer Garcia, is he here today? He's not here? So I call him the last pioneer, right? He happens to have one of the last video stores, I think, in the valley, right? So we'll send this to him. So, thank you. All right, North Town Plaza again was the one which represents the Snow House, which is on Conway, Snow House, Great Oaks Community Church, Cantus Plumbing. We kind of moved all his vehicles, put our light towers in there, kind of took over that. Our operation ran from sunup to sundown. The North Town Plaza was great and inspirational and letting us take over the parking lot, day in and day out. So Ms. Torres is here from North Town Plaza now?
Yes.
Yes? She is. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Ah, Mr. Brendan, here, I'm sorry. This is from Brandon's DME as well. Again, we parked right in front of his DME. I think he ended up probably closing down for about three or four days, allowing us to be there. So and again, special recognition, sir. This is for Brandon's DME on behalf of the City of Mission. This is spearheaded by our local firefighters as well, as local as our police union. Local 3609 of the Mission Firefighters Association was there day in and day out with their members, volunteering their trucks. Chief Sanchez, Assistant Chief Oliveres, were gracious enough assigning trucks to that location. There were some hot days out there and about close to 100 degrees. So Local 3609, Mission Firefighters Association, Justin. Justin happens to be one of our tractor-trailer drivers. He drove to Corpus and then he drove round trip. How many hours, Justin, was it, to Spring, Texas and back?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two hours, nonstop, no sleep. So.
With SARS getting rid of it, some trucks, we want some of those.
So thank you, Justin. Again, represented our Mission Police Association, TMPA joined up with, as well as the Firefighters Association, to make this happen. The go-to guy for TMPA, Tom Garcés, day in, day out, calls all the time. I don't know if he let me sleep, but it was good. It was a good thing. Tom? Idalgo County Sheriff's Office was one of our other associations that assisted us day in and day out, helping us move material, which, after moving so many cases per day, and just to let you know how many cases we moved, we had 100 pallets of water in one week. So multiply the cases per 100 pallets. So anybody here from Idalgo County Sheriff's Office? No? Excuse me? Okay, thank you. We'll pass it on to them. We needed a tractor-trailer. ENV Logistics stepped up, as well as SARS Trucking, and says, hey, what is it that you need? So they were one of the first ones that we tasked in parking a box trailer at 2718 North Conway. So ENV Logistics, are they here? No? No? All right. All right. Chief Dominguez was gracious enough to help me coordinate that for them. So. As we said, seven tractor-trailers. City of Mission has a couple of tractors, right? So we needed some assistance in a tractor. We ended up borrowing Peterbilt from DEA, from the McAllen office. Is anybody here, chief, from the DEA, McAllen office?
Some undercover today.
Chief Dominguez will take that too? I don't know if anybody knew this, but the word got out quickly. It was surprising to us. We started getting some phone calls saying that we have refugees. And I was like, refugees? I was like, no, you mean evacuees. Yeah, they were like, you mean evacuees? So I had to correct, we got the refugees and we got, I said, no, no, they're evacuees, right? So we're getting a phone call and another one and another one that they're here. I said, well, how many are here? I get phone calls from our city manager, Ms. Lerma, several. I said, well, I think it's like 20. 20 grew into 40, 80, 100, 200. So Connections for Christ International, Pastor Enrique Quique González was gracious enough, again, they fed the evacuees at our local social event center on South Mayberry. They cooked with volunteers and they fed them. We went ourselves. Several of the community directors went out there. We assessed their needs. We ended up getting them walkers, dental care for some that they needed. They needed money for laundry. We got them food, diapers. As we have to understand that FEMA is not the fastest, right? So we had to step in just like we did. And, just pastor, there you go. Thank you, sir. And it was comforting to them because they wanted to hear, you know, some comfort from the local church. And our final one here is when we needed some stuff and we needed to write then and there, I had to put a phone call. And this could not have been done simply by our Office of Emergencies Management and everybody else. Wonderful Citrus, we have a representative from Wonderful Citrus here? There you go. They came up and again, what do we need? I said, we needed water right away because we needed to ship out the first ones. They, they did a drive the whole week long, just like we did. And I believe they still keep on contributing and still collecting. So we, we thank you for what you've done for the City of Mission and the state of Texas. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We could be here for the past next two weeks thanking the many people. We had a lot of schools. We had a lot of churches that would come by, a lot of volunteers in our rec centers that just wanted to do their part. And believe me, they were appreciative. I was, it was gracious enough, our city manager let me go on that last run so we could speak to see, put a face to what we were talking to on the phone. And they pretty much had the three tractor-trailers, the last ones that we dropped off, the pastors said, and the civic officers, these three tractor-trailers will be gone in the next 24 hours. So the need is there and the need was great. And we thank you for allowing us to do this. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Mr. Garza, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Our next item is by Chief Dominguez on a proclamation.
Mayor, City Council, before I start, I would like to recognize Ms. Christina Rico that's here with us from Rio Grande Valley Families and Friends of Murdered Children, Inc. If you come up, please. Also, Ms. Fuentes and Ramirez as well, with the Idaho County District Attorney's Office, our crime victims unit, and our very own Diana Macias, our crime victim liaison as well. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the National Parents of Murdered Children establish September 25th as a national day of remembrance for murdered victims as a result of unanimously passed resolution by the U.S. Senate on October 16, 2007, and the U.S. House of Representatives on May 14 of 2007. Whereas POMC believes that honoring the memory of victims that have been killed by violence and acknowledging the resulting long-term traumas for families, communities, the nation is an important way of promoting public awareness and remembering our loved ones. Whereas parents of murdered victims, chapters, contact persons, and other organizations such as the Rio Grande Valley Family and Friends of Murdered Children, Inc., will be holding an event to commemorate the Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims on Monday, September 25, 2017. And whereas in 2016, there was an estimated 15,696 homicides nationwide, of which the Rio Grande Valley experienced 42 homicides, one murder every 33.5 minutes in the United States. And whereas the murder of a loved one robs their family of a mother, a father, sister, brother, son, daughter, husband, wife, partner, grandparent, aunt, uncle, extended family member, friend, neighbor, or colleague, and creates an overwhelming challenge to fill the void their absence creates. And whereas survivors of homicide victims are scattered across the Rio Grande Valley and are in need of specific and targeted intervention in the aftermath of a homicide, then starts with death notification and goes far beyond the burial, in some cases, a trial. And whereas survivors of homicides use their tragedies to tell stories of pain and anger inflicted by a homicide, they have rejected paths of retaliation, shame, and isolation, and instead lean towards learning and teaching lessons of compassion and peace. And whereas survivors of homicide victims transform their pain and anger into power and action by honoring the memory of their loved ones impacted by homicide through leadership, grief support, advocacy, survivors in reducing violence and promoting prevention and policy change on a local, state, and national level. And now therefore, we, the City Council, the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim September 25, 2017, as a national day of remembrance of four murdered victims. And we urge all the citizens of Mission, Texas, to join us for the fifth annual candlelight vigil. As long as I breathe, you will be remembered, to be held at the Far Bogus Ford Event Center located at 3,000 North Cage in Far, Texas, from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM, and participate in its observance. Proclaim this the 11th day of September, 2017.
We would like to have a motion to go ahead and approve this.
Second.
Do you have a motion, second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On behalf of the agency and group members, thank you for this proclamation. Mayor Salinas and City Council members, thank you for your continued support. It is very important to our success in order to be the voice of our loved ones. We would also like to thank both the city manager, Mr. Martin Garza, and Chief Dominguez for your support as well. As a surviving mother, we would like to invite all of our Mission residents and surrounding communities to attend our fifth annual Day of Remembrance for Murdered Victims on September 25th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Bogus Center. Also, other cities participating and providing funds to support our event are the City of McAllen, the City of Far, City of Edinburgh, and the County of Idalgo County Commission. I know the pain and suffering that families are going through on a daily basis. We also want to recognize Ms. Martinez. Her daughter is Jackie. She was murdered on April 17, 2012. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you all mind taking a picture with the council with the proclamation?
Okay, that's perfect right there. Everybody look over here. And in three, two, one, smile. Okay, nobody moving? Let me check this. Do one more. In three, two, one. Perfect, we got it.
Okay, wait, let me take another one.
I could take it for you if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
All right. We look over here and in three, two, one. There we go. We got it.
We'll go on to our next item. It's a report from our Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I'll begin with recent events. On Thursday, September 7th, 2017, we had the Raising Cains grand opening. This is their newest location here in the Rio Grande Valley. The support from the city, city council, and the community was excellent. In terms of upcoming events, on Thursday, we will relaunch our Buenos Tardeas luncheon. The event is from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. Tickets are $20 in advance and $25 at the door. The event will take place at Simran Country Club. On Wednesday, September 20th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the Mission Chamber of Commerce, we will host a Texas Hub certification workshop. The workshop is at no cost to our members. On September 27th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, the Mission Chamber of Commerce, along with BBVA Compass and the UTRGV Small Business Development Center, are excited to launch a seven-part workshop series for small business startups entitled Thinking Outside the Box. Businesses that attend the six out of the seven workshops will receive a one-year Clear Choice for Business checking account from BBVA Compass for free. Workshops will cover a variety of necessary education for businesses that are new or planning to start, ranging from finances to marketing. Next, on Wednesday, October 4th, we will host a Texas Workforce Hireability Workshop. We will educate our members on what it takes to properly employ someone with disabilities. In addition, they will learn about the free resources available to employers courtesy of Texas Workforce Commission. Lastly, on October 19th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Mario's Banquet Hall, we will have our 2017 Annual Banquet Hall. And I certainly invite you, Mayor, City Council, to join us for this event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for? Next item is Department Reports. They're in your packet. If you all have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
I move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the reports? As presented, all those in favor, 65 percent, aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 7 is citizens' participation. Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Just go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Buenos dias to todos. Susan Carlos Marín, represento la Cámara de Comercio Internacional. Y esta tarde venimos a invitarlos a algo muy importante.
We'd like, on behalf of the Cámara de Comercio Internacional, we'd like to invite everybody here present to our Grito de Independencia this Friday at Bandwidth Park from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. We will be having a, several activities there celebrating the Independence Day, Mexican Independence Day. And we'll have a lot of food. There will be mariachis. There will be music. And it's at Bandwidth Park, otherwise known as Parque de los Patos. We also have a, an invitation here we'd like to give to you, Mayor.
I mean, thank you very much.
And we ask everybody here present to come and join us and to please invite your friends and family. It is free, free parking, and there's free entry.
Anybody else that would like to address the council? If not, we're going to go into our public hearings and we'll go ahead and call on Mr.?
Ready? Mr. Council, item 1.1A is a public hearing for a rezoning of 5.98 acres of land, being all of Lot 2, 3A subdivision, from AOI, Agriculture Open Interim, to C3, General Business. TP Griffin Parkway Self-Storage LTD is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August 23rd, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Harmony Lane and East Griffin Parkway. And this property had been used, or had been operating under a conditional use permit since 2004. Rather than renewing their conditional use permit, staff recommended that we rezone the storage units to C3 or give it a commercial zoning, which would not be detrimental to the area considering that it is used for self-storage. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, as is our city manager. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor, against this proposal? Anybody in favor or against? Anybody? Anybody in favor or against this presentation? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve ordinance 4542.
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Also approve the rezoning of the 5.98 acres. We do have a motion and a second to approve by Mr. Plata. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Item B.
Item 1.1B is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and non-consumption of alcoholic beverages at Brick Fire Pizza &amp; More. The address is 704 East Griffin Parkway Suite 130, being a 1.25 acre tract of Lot 24-8, West Edition, a shareline subdivision. The property is owned C3, and the applicant is Brick Fire Pizza &amp; More LLC in care of Stephen Alanis. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance as well as wet zoning the property. On August 23rd, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located between Mayberry Avenue and Augusta, along the south side of Griffin Parkway. The applicant is requesting a CUP for the sale and non-consumption of alcoholic beverages for a proposed pizzeria. The 10,200 square foot building currently shares a home health agency with the proposed pizza parlor. The hours of operation are Monday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Friday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. A total of five employees will man the operation. I will note that parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. We do note that there are some residences within 300 feet of the proposed restaurant. However, there are no churches or schools within the 300-foot radius. We did have one concern, one of the abutting neighbors is planning on opening a adult daycare, and she doesn't have a problem with the conditional use permit being granted, but she would want the hours to be limited. She would want the business to start selling beer after 5:00 p.m. once her clientele leaves. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the waiver of the 300-foot separation to the residences. Approval for two years, at which time the applicant will renew their TABC license and conditional use permit, and also that the property be wet-zoned. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Yes, ma'am.
Dora Guevara, soy la directora de Las Palmas Montessori. Estamos en la mera esquina de Mayberry, la 495. También estoy en favor de que esté condicionado a que, hasta que los niños no estén cerca.
Is this a favor, sir?
Sí, de que sean menos, o sea, no desde temprano empezar a vender el alcohol, porque pues los niños van, vienen, y que sea como, de más tardecito ya cuando se fueron los niños, de las siete de la noche en adelante, pues ya puede ser vida de adultos. Yo estoy en favor, o estoy hablando por los niños, y por los papás de los niños que no pueden estar aquí. Y sabemos que el buen ejemplo pues empieza en todos lados.
Is this a favor?
A favor de qué?
Of the, of the, the propuesta?
Mientras esté condicionado de las siete de la noche, o lo más tarde para que los niños no vean eso, estoy de acuerdo. Todos tenemos derecho a tener un negocio.
The permit for during...
What are the hours, sir?
What are the hours, sir?
She's, they're proposing to sell alcohol starting at noon, all the way till closing. And what Ms., the owner of the daycare is saying is that she's not against the CUP, but she wants it to be limited to after 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, and you recommended not to have it after 7:00 p.m.?
We're recommending approval of the item. We did measure to the daycare, and we measured from door to door, and it was close to 600 feet.
They're not neighboring buildings.
They're not neighboring buildings, no.
And the surrounding businesses were allowed to go to the planning and zoning meeting?
Yeah, nobody showed up at the planning and zoning meeting. There was one person that called me and voiced their concerns. She's the abutting neighbor who's planning on opening a adult daycare. She would also like the hours to be after 5:00 p.m.
So we have an adult daycare center there?
It's not there yet. She's proposing it.
What are you going to do about it, then?
Right now, it's just a proposal, Mayor. There's nothing there currently. The pizza parlor's already underway.
So this is a restaurant, but they're asking for the CUP just to add alcohol to the beverage?
That would be not only beer, but...
It's just beer.
Huh? Just beer?
Tan solo quiero recordarles, Las Palmas es para 111 niños, y próximamente otro daycare that's there, cerquita, también va a abrir sus puertas. O sea, no solo son 111, sino los que están aquí, y los que vayan caminando por ahí. Limitando las horas, considero que puede ser algo beneficioso para los niños, no podemos quitarlo.
La propuesta is that they're going to start selling alcohol at 1:00 in the morning.
At 1:00 in the morning, nosotros tenemos a los niños. Los niños se van para las 6:30.
How long do they have, the children?
Dentro del centro, pero usted considera, si pudiera ser, que a la hora que lleguen sus papás por los niños, si ven salir gente, no digo que van a salir rebotando, pero, ¿cómo le diré?
How far away are the children from the place?
¿Cuál es usted?
How far away are they from the place?
Nosotros estamos en la mera esquina.
How far are they?
So it's a...
600.
600 feet, right?
When you measure from door to door, it's 595 feet.
If they're going to do damage during the day, the alcohol, what could happen?
Pues, haga cuenta, usted está representando a los adultos, está representando a los adultos, está representando a los niños.
Perdón, y los niños son de qué edad, qué edad, ma?
Tenemos desde 45 días hasta 13 años.
De 13 años, y todos están en la supervisión de un adulto, ¿verdad?
Por supuesto, estamos con el estado.
Sí, so no, they're outside of the building, that they can...
They can play.
Sí, pero outside of the...
No, they're with their parents.
Okay.
So it's close, ¿verdad? So what, the planning and zoning, the zoning, here the case?
Yes, at the time of the planning and zoning meeting, we only had that one phone call from the neighbor that was proposing to open up in the hotel.
So they didn't have her around?
She didn't show up, no. This is the first time.
Is the beer and wine going to be served with a meal only?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
For other restaurants, not a bar.
Not a bar? Okay. Okay.
It's a restaurant, I think, I don't think it's going to do any damage to the children. It's not going to be a tent, it's going to be a restaurant that they're going to sell more cerveza, no going to be liquor.
With the food.
With the food.
With the food.
With the food. There's a lot of difference.
Pues sí, o sea, if you consider it correct, ¿qué puede decir? Yo busco el bienestar de los niños.
Okay, what's the wish, said council? The ordinance would be 4543 and 4544.
I'd like to approve what has been given right now by our planning and zoning board.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation by the planning and zoning, and of course, our staff. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you.
Approved or not approved?
We approve.
The which? What do you approve?
What they're recommending, the planning and zoning, and the workers of the city, they're going to have the cerveza with the food.
Okay, gracias.
Thank you. The next item is item C.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and non-consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Palms Two Lounge. The address is 600 East 9th Street, Lots 11 through 15 of Block 142, Mission original townsite. The property is owned C3, and the applicant is Ricardo Rodriguez. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August 23rd, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of 9th Street in St. Marie, and Mr. Ricardo Rodriguez took ownership of the Palms in 2013. Prior to that, the Palms had been operating with a conditional use permit for life use that was granted back in 1993. And Mr. Rodriguez has had it for four years. We did make a call to PD, and there was minimal, there was only two calls, and they were, one of them was for the theft of a phone, I believe, and the other one was like a minor issue as well. So there hasn't been too much PD activity in the past 12 months at this location. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Sunday from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And there's a total of three to five employees manning the operation, and the parking lot is, on this side, is located along the south and east side of the building. It is noted that this falls within the central business district, so it is exempt from the parking requirements. Staff is recommending approval of the CUP for a period of now until September the 22nd of 2019, at which time their TABC license will need to be renewed, as well as their conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. Item 1.1C is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the ordinance is 4545.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
And the motion would be to approve the conditional use permit, and of course, ordinance. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We do have the disposition of minutes that we had on the city council meeting on August the 28th of 2017, and we also are going to acknowledge the minutes that we had for the zoning board of adjustments on April the 19th of 2017, and the planning and zoning commission on August the 9th of 2017. We do need a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to approve the minutes and to acknowledge the minutes as presented.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 4.1, Mr. Osorio.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item 4.1 is a preliminary plat approval of Davila Estates Subdivision, being a 6.299 acre tract out of Lot 5, Miller Brothers Nursery Resubdivision. The property is owned R1, and the developer is Norma Davila, and the engineer is Rodriguez Engineering. Mayor and council, this is a single-family residential subdivision that's located near West 2 Mile Road and Hillcrest Drive intersection. It consists of 22 single-family residential lots, all meeting water, sewer, drainage, and the street requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. Staff and city manager are also recommending approval. Item 4.1 is now before you.
The recommendation is to go ahead and approve the preliminary plat.
So moved.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor and council, good afternoon. Item 4.2, Mayor, is the approval of an ordinance. This is for the adoption of the fiscal year 2017/2018 annual budget, and as per city charter budget, shall be adopted no later than the 15 days prior to the beginning of fiscal year, and that is October the 1st of 2017. There was a public hearing that was held back in August the 22nd, 2017. The total budget of all funds as presented is $116,876, and this is for year 2017/18. At this time, Mayor, we're recommending approval of this ordinance.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve.
So move, Mayor. Second.
Do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do need a record vote for this item and the following item as well. If I may, we'd like to start with my left here, Ms. Jessica Ochoa.
Aye.
Mr. Plata.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Item 4.3, Mayor, is the approval also of an ordinance. This is for the adoption of the tax rate. The adoption of the tax rate for fiscal year 2017/18 is of 0.4862 per $100 property value. The tax distribution at 0.0804 is for the interest and sinking rate, and a total of 0.4058 for the maintenance and operation rate. The continual support of the 100, or the $10,000 exemption for the elderly is still part of the ordinance. Also, the $10,000 exemption for the disabled and the elderly disabled tax freeze, which was adopted back in 2005, is also in effect according to this ordinance. Staff and myself are recommending approval of this ordinance, and again, we do need a record vote.
Do have a motion, we need a motion to approve ordinance 4547.
Second.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's only one vote, there are two votes.
We have to do it in the vicinity, Mayor.
We're going to need to do our record vote, so Ms. Ochoa.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Item 4.4.
4.4 is also an approval of an ordinance. This is the adoption of Mission Economic Development Corporation 2017/2018 annual budget, and here with me, present is also Alex Mead, in case there's any questions. But the adoption of this budget is with appropriations in the amount of $7,195,847. The EDC debt service budget is in the amount of $1,156,309. This was approved by our MEDC board on Tuesday, August the 27th, or 22nd, I'm sorry, 2017, and at this time, we're asking for the council to approve such ordinance.
The ordinance is 4548, and we do need a motion to approve the recommendation.
So move, Mayor.
Second.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Yes, right. Item 4.5 is also an approval of an ordinance. This is for the adopting of the Mission Economic Development Authority 2017/2018 annual budget. The MEDA budget has the appropriations in the amount of $317,710. This was also approved by the MEDA board on Tuesday, August the 22nd, 2017, and at this time, we're also asking for the mayor and the council to approve this ordinance.
The ordinance is 4549.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item 4.6 is the approval of a publicity and tourism agreement with the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce, Inc. The funding from the Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax under VATS Tax Code Section 35.101 for attracting and promoting tourism and hotel industry. The agreement is for October the 1st, 2017, and this will go through September 30, 2018. The request is for the amount of $370,000. This is the same amount that we approved last year, Mayor, and we're asking approval for this item.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation to approve the request of $370,000.
Going to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Against, motion carries.
Mayor, city council, good afternoon.
50.
Item 4.7, Mayor, is the first of the four items that are required for civil service employees. 4.7 is the approval of the classified positions for the Mission Fire Department for the fiscal year 2017/18. In your packets, you have the ordinance and the actual classifications that were being, were approved by Civil Service Commission and being recommended by us. It'd be the deputy chief, captain, the lieutenant, engineers position, and firefighters, and I'll go over the numbers. And the deputy chiefs, we have three. For the captains, we have six. For the lieutenants, we have 17. Engineers, 15, and firefighters, 24. That is a total of 65, and then we do also include non-civil service employees, which is the assistant chief and the chief, which have a total of 67. This ordinance, we are approving the classified positions that were read out to you and are in your packets.
The ordinance is 4550.
I move for approval.
Second, Mayor.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On item 4.8, mayor, we are requiring the approval of the ordinance for the base salaries and the incentive package for the Mission Fire Department for the fiscal year 2017-18. You do have the actual base salaries that are printed in your packets, and of course also the incentive pay. The incentive pay includes longevity, seniority, certification, education pay, and assignment pay. These are those being approved by the Civil Service Commission, recommended by the Civil Service Commission, and by staff.
So move, mayor.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ordinance is forty-five, fifty-one.
Thank you. On item 4.9, mayor, is the approval of ordinance for the classified positions for the Mission Police Department for the fiscal year 2017-18. Those positions that are being recommended or approved by the Civil Service Commission are lieutenant, sergeant, corporal, patrolman. And the numbers that I'm going to read before you are, for lieutenants, we did increase from four to five. The change was made this year. Sergeant, eight. Corporals, nine. And patrolmen, one hundred and thirty-two. That's a total of one hundred and fifty-four. And then we also have the non-civil service employees, two assistant chiefs, and Chief Dominguez, for a total of one fifty-seven. At this time, we're requesting approval of the classified positions that were read out.
The ordinance is forty-five, fifty-two.
I move for approval.
Second, mayor.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you. On item 4.9 is the approval of...
Item 4.16.
Sir?
We're going to move to item 4.16.
Okay.
Hold me for a little second. 4.16 is the approval of an interlocal agreement between the City of Mission and Sheraland Independent School District regarding the Mission Sports Center.
Um, yes.
And the Sheraland Plantation.
Item 4.16 is the approval of the interlocal agreement between the City of Mission and Sheraland Independent School District regarding the Mission Sports Center at Sheraland Plantation. This is for the fiscal year 2017-2018, school year for baseball and softball practice. The cost is $880, and this interlocal will be presented for approval at the Sheraland School Board meeting, which is scheduled for later this month, on September 25th. We're taking it before the council first. Staff and city manager are recommending approval for submittal.
We do need a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julio?
Mayor Council, Julio Serna, president of the Sheraland School Board. I got Dr. Noel Garza with myself, and our assistant superintendent, Carolyn Mendola. Thank you very much. It's going to be good for our kids, both in Pioneer and Sheraland. We're excited.
Thank you all very much for everything you do.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We go back to Jesse. Where are you? 410.
Item 4.10, mayor, is the approval of an ordinance for the base salaries and the incentive package for the Mission Police Department for fiscal year 2017-18. And you have in your packets the base salaries that were approved by your budget, and the incentive package that includes also longevity, seniority, certification, education, and assignment pay, and clothing allowance. This is the items being requested for approval by the commission and my staff.
The ordinance is forty-five, fifty-three.
Move for approval.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. 411.
Yes, mayor, council, good afternoon. 411 is authorization to execute first one-year renewal option for off-site record storage and destruction services with creative imaging. Our current contract expires on September 31st of 2017. This is a first-year renewal option at a zero percent increase. Estimated cost is about $6,000 for the year, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
We need a motion to approve.
So move, mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 412, Ms. Carillo.
Yes, mayor, council. 412 is approval of request by County of Hidalgo Elections Department to use city facilities for early voting and Election Day for the November 7th, 2017 general election. Early voting will take place from October 23rd to November the 3rd, and Election Day will be November the 7th. They want to use Bandworth Gym and City Hall for both early voting and Election Day, and Central Fire Station for Election Day only. And staff and city manager recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 413.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Item 413, we're seeking authorization to award bid for Bozengro Club Athletic League uniforms. We receive a total of six bid responses. We're going to award exclusive decals, which is the lowest responsible bidder meeting all specifications. Estimate cost is $20,111.50. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do have, need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
Move to approve, mayor.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 414.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The item 414 is to authorize the city manager to execute a lease agreement for sixty golf carts via buyboard contract number 373-11 for the Sherwood Municipal Golf Course. This new fleet will replace thirty-four 2013 models on which the lease has expired already. We will also add an additional twenty-six carts to meet the demands of the winter Texas golf season and large golf tournaments, for a total of sixty carts. It's a thirty-six-month lease at a cost of $66,448. And if there are no questions, staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, we do have a recommendation by your staff.
So move, mayor.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. 415.
Mayor and council, item 415 is the authorization to award contract for City of Mission Community Center roof recover. Through Choice Partners Cooperative, there was two bid responses that were received. American Contracting USA was the lowest responsible bidder meeting specifications for the base bid. The bid amount was of $187,000. The estimated completion time is not to exceed 120 days. Staff and city manager are requesting approval to submit.
When do you think they'll start work?
I believe they're going to start immediately, sir.
So October, they're going to be busy?
They'll be busy in October.
Okay.
I move, mayor.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to approve the amount that we awarded the bid of $187,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
416. We already took that one. 417.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, mayor, city council members. Come before you, seeking approval of work authorization number 10 with Javier Nogosa Engineering related to the Mile Three Line Santeras Sewer Improvements. Work authorization number 10 entails plan specification, estimates, and utility easement acquisition services for a Mile Three Santeras Sewer Improvements between Conway Avenue and Prosper Row, which is north of the Three Mile Line. Improvements of project includes ten-inch sanitary sewer pipe extension, installation of sanitary sewer manholes, and utility adjustments. Cost of engineering and acquisition services is of $159,500. Staff and city manager recommend approval of work authorization number 10 with Javier Nogosa Engineering.
Need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
So move, mayor. Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. 418. Approval resolution.
Yes, mayor, council. This is Resolution 1522, which I will be reading in its entirety. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mission, Texas, in opposition of Senate Bill Four relating to the enforcement of immigration laws by local law enforcement. Whereas the 85th Texas Legislature passed Senate Bill Four, signed into law May 7th, 2017, and was to take effect September 1st, 2017, relating to the enforcement of immigration laws by local law enforcement. Whereas on August 30th, 2017, the U.S. District Court, Western District of Texas, San Antonio Division, temporarily enjoined several key provisions of SB Four, including the prohibition of public officials making statements on matters of public concern to include this resolution. Whereas SB Four will not enhance public safety, but rather interfere with the effective use of local law enforcement by requiring police officers and other personnel to utilize their time and resources in enforcing immigration law and thus impeding their ability to combat serious crimes. Whereas neither the state of Texas nor the federal government will provide additional funding to local entities for the purpose of compliance with Senate Bill Four, leaving the local governments to bear the financial burden of enforcement. Whereas the City of Mission strives to maintain good police-community relationships within the city by fostering a relationship of trust, respect, and open communication with all residents, which in turn leads to a more effective method of law enforcement. Whereas Senate Bill Four will create fear and distrust within the community and further destroy the police-community relationship that the city has worked so diligently to achieve, resulting in negative perceptions discouraging reporting of crimes and damaging the economic well-being of the community by inhibiting investments in tourism within the city. Whereas the federal district court has recognized the public interest in protecting constitutional rights, maintaining trust in local law enforcement entities, and avoiding the heavy burdens that the new law imposes on local entities. Whereas all factors considered, the City of Mission imposes the implementation and enforcement of SB Four. Now therefore be it resolved on this 11th day of September, 2017, the city council of the City of Mission hereby expresses its opposition to the implementation and enforcement of Senate Bill Four, and further supports the efforts of all local governments to uphold the U.S. Constitution by resisting efforts to dismantle it with discriminatory and suppressive legislation such as Senate Bill Four.
Do need a motion to approve.
So move, mayor.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve our Resolution 1522. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries.
Thank you.
We do have, do we have an executive session?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything to say?
No, mayor, no comments.
We have no comments either.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to VTCA Government Code Section 551.001.
Do have a motion.
Second.
And a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. Need a motion to reconvene?
I'd like a motion to reconvene.
Do have a motion.
Second.
And a second to reconvene. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against motion carries. We do have a, go ahead, Mr. Flores.